Good evening, everyone. Welcome to the Clovis City Council meeting of October fourteenth, twenty twenty four. We appreciate you all being here tonight. I will call this meeting to order and I will invite Councilmember Bessinger to lead us in the flag.
Join me in slitting our flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next, Drew. Roll call, please. Councilmember Basco.
Here.
Councilmember Bessinger.
Here.
Councilmember Moana Tua.
Here.
Councilmember Pierce.
Here.
And Mayor Ashbeck.
I am here.
First up tonight is public comments. This is an opportunity for members of the audience who would like to address this council on an item that is within our jurisdiction but not on our agenda tonight. I would ask you to do that right now. There's a lot of hand signaling going on. What are you guys talking about? You guys want to talk? You guys want to talk about Amy? Okay. Is there anyone in the audience who would like to address the council? Trenton, you want to go first? I mean, Chris, I'm sorry. We were just talking about Trenton in the parking lot. Sorry. Oh, okay.
I'm sure I've been called worse than that.
By me, probably. No, I'm just kidding. Just kidding. Sorry about that.
Mayor Ashbeck and city council members, thank you for your time this evening. My name is Chris Bridger. I'm a captain with Clovis Fire Department and I'm the vice president of the Clovis Firefighters Association. And I'm here on behalf of Clovis Firefighters Association to express our support for Measure Y. All of us in our community will have the ability to vote. Increase in calls for service, not only has our population grown, but with that, the size in terms of square mileage footprint has grown as well. Our department is struggling to meet the response time standards that we have set for ourselves. This also, this is also the standard that we strive to meet as we are an internationally accredited fire department through the Center for Public Safety Excellence, an accomplishment we have maintained through five cycles starting in two thousand three. Response time issues greatly affect service delivery because in our industry, minutes and seconds truly matter. To put it in perspective, roughly seventy percent of our calls are medical in nature. Per the American Heart Association studies, it has found that every minute that an individual that is in cardiac arrest and is without care loses ten, twelve percent chance of survival. When it comes to structural fires, whether it residential, residential homes, apartments, or one of our local businesses, the National Institute of Standards and Technology Research shows that the fire doubles in size every minute to minute and a half. This not only puts citizens at risk, but it puts fire personnel at risk and contributes to a greater loss to homeowners and business owners. If a sales tax measure to be approved by our citizens, we would have necessary funding to put measures in place to lower these response times and maintain the service delivery levels that our citizens and our customers deserve. As a member of the department, it is my desire to provide the highest level of care to my community, and I also want the highest level of care for my family. When I was eight years old, my parents made the decision to move our family to Clovis so that my brothers and I could have a better quality of life. They wanted us the ability to attend better schools and to live in a safer community. I would like to finish with this. To those in the room, those online, and any other who may hear this in the future, the Clovis way of life is not just a slogan. It's a standard. Our residents deserve the best in everything we can give them as a city. As a citizen, we need to think about what the Clovis way of life means to us. To think about the reasons why you moved to Clovis and to think about the things that, that have been afforded to you along the way and decide if we want to keep that. Decide, decide if you want to afford the same opportunity to your kids and your grandkids. Decide if we want to keep Clovis, Clovis. So when you vote, we ask that you vote to protect your family. We ask that you vote to protect your neighborhood. We ask you to vote to protect your community, and we ask you to vote to keep your tax dollars here. And we ask you to join Clovis firefighters in voting yes on Measure Y. Thank you.
Thank you, Chris. We appreciate you being here tonight. Thanks. Thank you so much. Other public comment. Mr. Trevino, it looked like you were getting ready to join us up here.
Hello?
Hi. Nope. You pushed that little button. There you go. Thanks.
Good evening. My name is Steven Trevino. I live at one six six three Bullard. Last year, I was here in February to, talking about my, my life as a paper boy in my neighborhood. And I was describing my life as it was when I was a boy. It was during the sixties and we had the war going on and, and different protests and, and, and most importantly, Martin Luther King. And that was last year. And I wasn't going to come tonight, but last week I heard, I heard, I watched this online on YouTube, and I was watching the council members pretty angry of what was going on. And I myself don't feel that many of us have been represented very well by the city council or the city. Where I live, we have no parks. Every neighborhood in the city has a park. Just this weekend, I went to the Running Horse. I'd never been there before. I didn't even know what it was. I was driving by there. I go, what is this? And I got off and I went to look. Beautiful park. Beautiful park. And, and I've been to a couple of other parks here in Clovis. Very beautiful parks, but we don't have a park. And, and I approached, again, I approached the city council last year about having some kind of monument for Mr. Albert Perkins or Mr., for Martin Luther King and the farm workers. And I believe that we can do it. It doesn't take a lot of money. You know, soon after I did that, the city of Clovis named a street after a young lady, Prandini, over there by Clovis High School. Why can't we have a street named after Mr. Albert Perkins or after our Martin Luther King? Why not? Would it be that expensive to do? You know, and, and because I believe it is important. And I, I know that you guys and me, we come from a whole different set of lives. My father was a farm worker. I, my dad worked at the Altisera Ranch back when, when I was born. And, and we're from an old different era. I was born in nineteen fifty seven. But I believe that Mr. Perkins, he deserves recognition. And, and I've mentioned it to other people and they always tell me, ah, Steve, you know, you're, you're kicking a dead horse. Never going to happen. So you were, you were, you were all talking about representation of Latinos. Well, here's your chance. Here's your chance. Right here, I can't remember, by Russell, where the police department is. Why can't we rename that street after either Mr. Perkins or Martin Luther King or the former council member? I can't remember her name right now.
Peg Boss?
Yes, after Peg Boss. That, or even this street back here, Fourth Street, after Peg Boss. Why not? Would it be that expensive? Would it be that much of a big hassle? You know, and, and it'll be there forever and ever. You know, God willing. You know, so anyways, I just, I wanted to bring that to your, I, I, you know, I don't mean to be a bother, but I think it's really important. I really do. You know, so anyways.
You're definitely not a bother. Thank you for reminding us. And a small note that at the corner of Third and Sunnyside, you can probably envision there's sort of, it looks like it was halfway going to be some statue, art statue or something along the way that never got finished. We did name that Peg Boss Plaza last year at the mayor's breakfast. So
Okay.
I think John is working on that right now to get that finished soon. But that will be a chance to recognize Peg and other Clovis leaders. And that might be a nice place for Mr. Perkins to be recognized as well. But thank you for reminding us. Probably we didn't remember as well as we should have. So thank you for coming, and you are never a bother, and your points are well taken.
Okay.
Thank you so much. Yep, you bet. Thank you so much. Appreciate you.
Thank you very much.
Good call. Anyone else? All right. There's no one else in the chambers. I will note that we have a couple of letters on the dais in the public comment, category one about water quality, one about mosquitoes, and four with questions or opposed to Measure Y. So that is what we have on the dais here here tonight. Next up is consent calendar. These are items that are routine in nature. We act on them with one motion unless someone from the council or the audience wishes to pull any of the items. Anybody on the council have any consent calendar items to pull? Audience? All right. We'll close the public portion and bring it back. Entertain a motion for consent calendar items one through four.
Motion to approve consent calendar items one through four.
I'll say it in a minute.
There's a motion, a second. All those in favor, say it by saying aye. 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 Opposed. Motion carries five oh. And in what could be the world's shortest council meeting ever, Amy must have magical powers that we will benefit from. There's only two items tonight. And the first is consider approval and confirmation of a city manager's appointment of the general services director. Mr. Holt.
Thank you, Mayor, and members of city council. It is my pleasure this evening to recommend the appointment of Amy Hans as the next general services director effective November first two thousand twenty four. She has over eighteen years of experience in three critical positions with the city. She currently manages over a hundred and twenty personnel in transit, senior services, and recreation. She has earned her bachelor's degree and master's degree in business administration. She is highly respected throughout the community in positions inside and outside the city. She's very highly qualified and prepared for the position and therefore, again, being redundant, but it is my pleasure to recommend the appointment of Amy as the next general services director. That concludes staff's report, and we're available for questions.
Thanks, John. Any questions or comments from staff or from whoever you all are? I'm a little confused. What was your name again? I'm just kidding. Whoever you are.
Just, just a comment. When I was the mayor and I would go to cog meetings, the group routinely would compliment the city of Clovis, especially on our transit. And that was Amy's bailiwick. They would always, they said Clovis Transit, they always said Amy's name. Our senior center is, is a gem. I have seniors who've told me, I go there several times a week. They go there to have lunch. It's part of their routine. And when, especially if you're living by yourself and you're a widow or a widower, it's easy to get complacent, watch Judge Judy all day long. It's the same show, just different people most of the time. But it's, but what we do is really important in the lives of seniors. I did have a senior that I know very well told me that Clovis Transit rounded up specifically saved his life because he lost his license when he turned eighty. During COVID, he couldn't get it redone. And he's failing physically. He's there mentally, but he's failing physically. And he takes Clovis Transit every day, has lunch, talks to some people, takes Clovis Transit back to his house. And you get to the point sometimes where it's easy to just sit in your chair and kind of augur in. And when we serve our seniors like that, we're extending their lives. And these are our grandparents and our great grandparents and our neighbors. So we do good work, but we don't do that. That's done by Amy and her staff, and this is a great confirmation.
Thanks, Drew. Any other comments?
Yeah, I would just like to say that I think she's an awesome selection for this position. And over the years, she's been amazing to work with, you know, from my, my days at the police department and being able to reach out to her at any time for anything is much appreciated. So I think it's well deserving and look forward to what she's going to accomplish in the future.
One?
Amy, I think you, you remember when you were first appointed and I first got on to the city council and the transit report usually doesn't get placed on the agenda. And I think the other staff were like, I don't think you want to put that on. And it came on and, yeah, I was new. So I, I don't do it anymore, but I questioned it.
Okay. He's not telling He's not telling history on that.
And so, um...
Should've been a warning.
You, you were so professional. You, you, you allowed us to understand the work. And after that, you allowed, you took me on a tour of transit for the senior services. And then, um, I think you also were instrumental during the Measure C executive committee meetings. I know you were in the technical, but then on our side, on the executive committee's side, every time we had a question, it was you, Shawna and, um, staff who provided detailed factual, um, numbers, facts, so that way we can really assess the position that is best for what we use the funds for. And I, I appreciated that because I came in with very little knowledge of the technicalities of what Measure C involved. And I appreciate that. And lastly, you know, with regards to the senior center, you know, the seniors have a special place, at least in my heart. And I'm, I'm pretty sure the rest of the council as well. You've done an excellent job, uh, working with our staff. And I appreciate the staff being here at the senior center and also of transit and the different departments that you're in charge of. Uh, this is perfect and we are, we are blessed to have you. And we look forward to working more with you in this new role. So, congratulations.
Hey, there's no vote yet. Don't congratulate her yet. Diane?
Yeah, I'm really excited about this appointment and confirmation opportunity tonight. Um, Amy was one of the first, uh, staff members that I got acquainted with as I got to tour the new transit center and senior center. And it wasn't just about the professionalism of it, but that certainly was not lost on me. But the passion and excitement for what the city was able to provide in terms of transit and our senior center and those opportunities, uh, really just kind of opened my eyes to that aspect of the staff here with the city of Clovis. That was one of my first experiences with it. And I've seen that time and time again, whether it's department heads or other staff members. No matter what it is, you see that through our staff. And that was so clear and it really is what makes Clovis Clovis. We get to say that so often and it's, it's so true. And that Clovis way of life isn't about those of us who are up here. It's about what the staff projects to the citizens. And that's really that encounter point for people and why they feel the way they do about getting to live here in Clovis. And so, Amy was one of the first people who really helped me see that in a different way. And so, I'm excited, um, that she's gonna be able to continue the great work in the general services, uh, department. And I'm just excited to see more and more of that. But again, it's, it's not just the competency and the professionalism, but it's that passion and energy for what it is that, uh, she does that really earned my respect first and foremost.
So, I'll just say yes to all the things that, uh, that you just heard. I had the pleasure this morning to go to the Cal Act conference that Amy and Bethany and team put on. And I see, I see faces in our audience that I just met this morning. I have the same outfit on that I had like on hours ago, so don't tell anybody. Um, I think it's testimony though to the difference that you have made, uh, across the state relative to transit. Um, and you're not leaving transit. Um, you're just stepping, uh, to a slightly bigger role and, and leaving it in good hands. And, um, I think, as I said this morning, transit is just about people. Um, people ride those buses, people go to the doctor, people rely on that. To Drew's story, um, so I think it's, it really does reflect your personality. And I think to the senior center, I am envious of that job that you have there. You built a beautiful facility. Too soon for the water feature still? Okay, water feature. Um, uh, but, uh, when I, when we opened it, a man came up to me and told me that, uh, the senior center saved his life. And so, uh, most of us, she's gonna cry. Most of us don't have the ability to hear that from people. So, you, and I know you were gonna say you didn't do it single-handedly, but you, um, having those services at the senior center really did, uh, did make a difference for this individual. His wife had just passed. He said he had, didn't have anything to do. And he just thought, "Well, I'll just come and see what happened." And he'd been there every day since. So, I just think the difference you have made in the lives of, of our community through transit, through the senior center, and now with our team in a larger way through general services will be really great. So, this morning at the conference, they introduced her as the general services director because I was feeling a little bit like seven o'clock in the morning, whatever time it was. I say, "Hey, she hasn't gotten the vote yet." So, it was a little soon, um, but it was a pleasure to be there this morning. Nice to see you all again. And, uh, it is a pleasure to be able to, to, uh, presumably make this appointment for you tonight. So, um, thank you, Amy, for saying yes. You did say yes, didn't you? Okay, just checking. Whew, just checking. Um, so before we, uh, uh, move along, is there anybody from the public who wanted to comment on that? I see hands there. Oh, I didn't know who we were talking to. All I could see was the podium. It's hiding back there. Um, it's really a testament to how highly respected Amy is by her staff, that they're all here, they're all wearing blue. If you're one of Amy's staff, stand up, please.
Oh.
You have a blue anyway. You will be.
This is what makes general services special. But Amy's leadership is what motivates, motivates these people to serve our community. So, thank you all for coming tonight. And then the other half of the room is Cal Act, which is California Association for Coordinated Transportation. They're all here as part of the maintenance conference that Amy set up, organized and, and helped, um, as part of just all of her work that she does throughout the entire state in transit. So, all you Cal Act people, you can stand up too. Thank you all for being here. And you're, of course, you're welcome to speak too, except for you, Steve. Um, but, um, I, I'm thrilled that Amy will be taking over the general services director role. She's a fantastic employee, a fantastic friend. She's my work wife. Now, I'm gonna cry. Um, yeah, and she's, she's gonna do great things.
Thanks, Shawna. I will say, you're not retired yet, but, um, Amy is also a testament to your leadership. There's something about making sure people that come along are ready to step in. Um, and so, this is, this is really a testament to you and you are a testament to all of them. So, that's one of the best things about our community, so... All right, anyone else wanna comment? Cal Act friends have any stories you wanna tell us about Amy? We still could change our mind. It's still early. It's only six twenty-four. It means a lot to her. What do you mean, no? Don't say no. I know. Uh, of course, Mr. Trevino, you can comment.
Uh, for past couple of years, uh, I retired a couple of years ago. And I walk from my house to downtown almost every day. And it's kind of funny. I, uh, I'll be coming down Fifth Street over here and, and I'll, I'll be approaching the bench where, where the buses stop. And the buses stop and I go, "Hey, I don't, I'm not, I'm not gonna ride the bus. I go like this," you know? It's kind of funny, you know? And then they take off. But, but they, they, it's sometimes they'll say, they'll go, you know, they make some kind of sign, you know, I go, "No, no."
Not today.
Not today, but that's happened quite a few times. I, I think it's kinda, you know, it's really neat, you know, when they do that.
Yeah, yeah. We got a great team.
Yeah.
Thank you so much. Amy, would you, oh, Trent, go ahead. Uh, Chris, what is wrong with me? Is she talking about me right now? Sorry. Can I just call you? That'd be so much easier.
That's okay.
Okay, fine.
I've been over there texting him. It's close. I just wanna say something real quick and I actually wasn't expecting to say anything. Um, one thing I actually really appreciate having, having grown up in the community is, so, uh, being, I've worked for the fire department for twenty years now. And, um, Amy used to set up and organize the meals that we would deliver on holidays to seniors. Right? So, what I love to see is we would be on duty. We would, we would come by the senior center, we'd get a whole bunch of meals, we'd drive around. She organized, to my knowledge, she organized all that. When we would deliver them, um, it was amazing the impact you would see on how that would change their day. On a day where they're on a holiday by themselves at their house and they don't have somebody. So, I think as Clovis as a whole, that is, um, something that, that speaks volumes of what Clovis stands for. And I think that, um, it's a great appointment. And it was something that, I know for me, seeing it, putting so much heart and soul behind that to make a difference in, in a community member that maybe, um, didn't, didn't get too much connection, so...
Yeah, that's nice. Thanks for sharing that. Thank you. Please.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Alex Clifford. I'm the CEO of San Joaquin RTD in Stockton, California. And also the chairman of Cal Act. And it's a pleasure to be here to support Amy. Um, also resident of Clovis in nineteen seventy-seven.
Oh, it's not too late to move back.
There you go. We're, I think, having this kind of a showing from Cal Act has to tell you something that, uh, we're very impressed and proud of Amy. I'll tell you, I came aboard, I wanna say six or seven years ago, onto Cal Act. Amy was the chair at that time. I was quite impressed with her professionalism, her knowledge and how she led the organization. And for the last two years, I've aspired to rise to that same level. She's a fantastic appointment for you. Congratulations.
Thank you so much. Anyone else? Amy, this is like, this is like a roast to Amy. This is awesome. It's not your turn yet, Amy.
Um, I'm Jaclyn Cuddy with the California Association for Coordinated Transportation, the executive director. And I really wanted to come up here and thank Amy for her leadership and everything she's done as a board member. But not only that, she's set an example nationwide for things. The Narcan project that she did. We're trying to get the federal government to adopt that for other transit agencies and provide additional funding for that. So, she's done a lot of stuff like that besides helping. She's hosted rodeos and conferences and lots of things. And I just really appreciate you and we're gonna miss her in the transit industry, but I know it's not no and not goodbye forever. But I'm really happy for her and congratulations, Amy, and thank you guys for appointing her.
Thank you so much. All right. Amy, would you like to say anything? I don't know. You've been kind of muttering the whole time. I'm watching, like, who are you talking to? So, here you go. I had specific instructions that no one was supposed to speak, but they didn't listen to me. So, um, gosh, okay. Uh, I'm not normally nervous when I come up here, but I'm very nervous tonight. So, um, good evening, Madam Mayor. It's good to see you again, council members. It is an honor, a privilege and very humbling to be in front of you this evening for consideration as the next general services director. My family is here with me this evening. My husband, Brian, is in the audience along with my son, Braden. And my daughter, Alyssa, is also here virtually from her home in Boston. When I joined the city almost eighteen years ago, I could never have imagined being here this evening. I had made a dramatic pivot on my career path and I wasn't clear about what was next. However, once I fully understood how this city operates, I knew I had found my place. The shared vision and values of the city staff fit me like a glove. The general services department has a long history of collaborative problem solving, creativity and proactive programming that focuses on serving our internal and external customers. The standards set by the two previous directors, Robert Ford and Shawna Halterman, are extraordinarily high. And I am completely confident that the general services staff will continue to provide the same excellent service to their, to this community. I would like to express my sincere thanks to city manager, John Holt, for the recommendation. And to Shawna Halterman, I wasn't gonna call her my work wife, but she said it first. Um, my mentor, work wife and friend of sixteen years. To the talented general services team. And to all my teammates at the city, I wanna thank you so much for your support as I transition into this role. Legacy is something we talk a lot about here at the city of Clovis and we take our history seriously. And we use the past to really inform and guide our decisions as we move forward into the future. And my goal as director is to continue leading with compassion, an open mind and to use the lessons of the past to continue the good work we do each day. I truly am humbled, humbled, to be a part of the history and legacy of this wonderful city. So, thank you. Thanks, Amy. Congratulations, sort of early, maybe, almost. It might happen. I'm not sure. All right, thank you, uh, Amy, and thank you all. We'll close the public portion and, uh, bring you back to the council. And, uh, would love a motion to confirm, uh, Amy's appointment as the director of general services.
I'd like to make a motion to confirm Amy Hans as general services director for the city of Clovis. Second.
There's a motion and a second. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries now. Congratulations. You know, it's hard to be a leader when no one does what you say. You say, "Don't talk, don't clap." Your people are clapping.
Train the club.
Come on. Oh, look at that. It's pretty slick that Amy's appointment came when she had a conference in town. That was good. A hundred of your closest friends coming. That was good. That was, we've been hard to vote no, Amy. Congratulations, Amy. Uh, and the, uh, only other item is to consider, item number six, is to consider the approval of a change in council meeting schedule. Uh, John?
Uh, thank you, Mayor, Member of City Council. Uh, staff has recommended that council consider canceling next week's meeting on October twenty-first. That concludes staff's report and we're available for questions.
Is there any comments from staff, council, or I mean, whoever you are, public? I'm in trouble tonight, who's who, I'm not sure. Public? Close the public comments, bring you back to the council.
My wife will be happy, it's her birthday.
Oh, nice.
Motion to cancel the October twenty-first, twenty twenty-four meeting.
Second? Motion is second, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Happy birthday to Yvonne. City Manager comments?
I was gonna say, we canceled it for Yvonne.
We do. We canceled for her. Tell her we said that.
I have no, I have no comments.
Did you see her? Nothing? Wow. Diane?
I did get to attend the Fresno Fair today, so that was great. I missed it when I think we had a horse race or something. I wasn't able to go to that one, but I did get to go to the horse races today, and so I just wanted to, you know, acknowledge that and got to see so many different things, and it's just a great opportunity to kind of showcase our county, and always exciting to be part of that, so that was great.
Thanks, Matt.
Nothing.
Drew?
I just have a quick question, and we can report back at this later in time. The no mixing of waste, leaflet went out, very well done, beautiful. I recall when this was pushed to us, I want to say four years ago, we were promised that we weren't gonna have to go in and inspect garbage cans, and now...
We're going to go in and inspect garbage cans.
Just like you don't have to have marijuana sales in your town, now we have to accept deliveries. What is, I'd like to know at some point, what is staff gonna do? I'm assuming they're not gonna cut open people's bags and look in, I mean, that'd be horrible for staff. And I don't expect a response tonight. People are, people who are already irritated with government are, I had one person called the Garbage Gestapo, and I understand their frustration. I've been diverting my stuff and doing, you know, I started doing it a long time ago, but I'm just kind of wanting to know, what is staff expected to do? Because we're being, are we gonna get beat up by the state if we don't swear that, yes, I went through people's garbage, and which I, you're shaking the head, yes, but I already knew the answer to that question. What are we gonna be doing?
So, if I can, I'll do a quick response here. Over the last few years, we've been working methodically about putting into the state's law and providing compliance with it. I think you'll see unfolding over the next few years the answers to your question about what staff's involvement is with the mandates. To your point, is there, I mean, there will be garbage inspections to meet compliance. It's just a matter of fact that we have to go and lift lids and garbage and look if there's what we call contamination, materials being mixed in the wrong cans. At this point, as we pointed out in our news releases, media releases, the flyer, we're not after putting any regulatory penalties or any of those where there's huge consequences. We're trying to do this through education, and so we will continue to do that. But I would say that in the next few years, if you look at SB fifty-four, if you look at zero waste, right, SB fifty-four, no plastic bags anymore. So they spent all this time training us to get plastic bags, zero plastic bags is coming. You can't put compostable plastic bags in your green organics waste because they're not compostable, even though they say they're... So there's a lot we're working through. The flyer we recently sent out had a lot of information, had a lot of things that, as we get feedback from our constituents, how we change the responses to make sure we're continually educating. But at this time, it's a much friendly approach as opposed to any regulatory approach, but the long short of the answer is to opening up can lids, you read that right, and better that we do it, and if we don't, then the state would come in and provide some sort of author, you know, direction or whatnot under much more penalties. And so at this point, we're doing the best we can, taking education as opposed to citing and code enforcement and those other, you know, less wanted ways.
Thank you. I expected that was gonna be our position, but I kind of wanted to talk about it publicly because there were a lot of people who were understandably a little worked up about it.
The flyer generated a lot of comments.
But it was a very professional flyer, and if you looked at it from, of course, we look at it from, we understand what it's like to deal with our friends in Sacramento, and we read it, and when we did this four years ago, or whenever it was, I knew this was coming. So, thank you.
Thanks, Scott. Just one more decision for the day. What do I do with this piece of trash? It's become much more complicated. Aye, aye, aye. Anything else? Just a couple of things for me. So I did have a chance to attend the CalACT this morning, that was great, and to Bethany and all the team that put that together, it was a great turnout. I think Amy said a hundred and forty people in Clovis, staying in Clovis, shopping in Clovis, eating in Clovis, and I think all seemed like it was going well, so thank you for that invitation. Also, a shout out to the Senior Center for the awesome car show on Saturday, that was a lot of fun. I felt incredible pressure to choose a car, like, wait, so I chose only from my heart. And I bought, I chose the car that my father bought me in nineteen seventy-four or so, is my first car, was a sixty-five Mustang. So that was my criteria, so that's how I chose. There was much more technical choosing, but that's how I chose. It was a lot of fun, so good job, and I think everybody had a really, really good time. So thanks to the team, it was super well done. I also wanted to give a shout out to a young man named Paul in graffiti abatement. I don't know Paul, but can you tell him something for me? I called the hotline, as I often do, and there was graffiti on our Clovis Culinary Sign and our shopping center, that shopping center at Will and Ashland, on our particular placard in that monument sign. And I got a live first, I've never gotten a human before, and I was quite excited, so I chatted with Paul, and I told him, and he's like, I don't know if we can get it today. And I said, I'm not asking for it today, just want you to, I said, I'm just gonna say to you what I always say on the recorded line. Anyway, about two hours later, I got a call back that he got it, that it was taken care of that day, and it was super great, and he didn't have to call me back, but I was very impressed. So if you can find Paul in graffiti abatement, thank him for me, it was super impressive customer service. So that was, that was really great. And to Scott and your team, Scott drew this short straw and had to have breakfast with him this week as you were out of town, and I had two photos for Scott, and I think they're both fixed, which is super great. I'm not sure about the sidewalk, but the tree was fixed. So that was really, that was great. A neighbor had cut down a tree in his sidewalk strip, kind of, and there was like this point, and I just thought someone's gonna impale themselves on it, so thank you for getting and taking care of that, so that's awesome. And finally, I just want to do, Dawn Wacknick was here last week, talking about this center stage production, Joseph and the Amazing Technicolor Dreamcoat, and I saw Jenny there on Saturday night. If you have not gone, you must go. It is the most extraordinary performance, the technology was great. The Memorial District has spent a fair amount of money making that theater in their building performing arts ready. It was the best audio, way better than Strwyne, which I can only understand about half of what they were saying. So it was just a super great performance. Jenny, when we chatted, she's, I came because Dawn said we should come. So I would just encourage our community to, it's got one more week of shows, it's really well done, it's all local talent, and if you haven't had a chance to see it, it really is an evening well spent, so a lot of fun. And I just wanted to, kudos to all those volunteers in the Memorial District, and I'll just let, note for my colleague down here that Elvis makes a surprise appearance. Just saying, it wasn't your Elvis, but it was a Elvis, so he did make a surprise appearance in this show, so it's really well done. So we are lucky to have community theater in Clovis, really, really lucky, so supporting it, it's super important, so, anyway, thanks for that. All right, and that is the end of our... Who? The guy who never talks? I'm having a hard time, I might have, I was gonna make a joke. Vong, I forgot you. You could say nothing and surprise me.
I do have one, because Matt made a show. Matt and I went to the ribbon cutting for Clovis Community College, and it was a beautiful building, and the partnership, I think Andy was there, Shawna was there, so our staff made it a good show in as well, so it was just a beautiful event, beautiful facility, a college for our students. That's all I have.
Sorry, I'm all confused tonight. All right, with that, that concludes our business for tonight, meeting is adjourned.